The following is presented by TCI Cable Vision of Montana Incorporated as a public service to the Hamilton community.
A lot of issues on the table where we were on the High Line all last week, crossed the High Line anyway. We started out in Lewestown and on up on the Fort Belknap and then into Haver, then from Haver across to Glasgow, Glasgow down through Jordan, and then from Jordan back to Billings before Easter and now after Easter we'll be over here most of the week, getting back to Billings on Friday night, we hope, with a little bit of luck. But going around town meetings and just seeing what Montana's thinking about, what's on their minds, we find that Montana ideas work a lot better in Washington than Washington ideas work out here. And we do this, we do this every year, and just like I said on the radio this morning, that sounded like rodeo, it's your turn. So it's sometimes it's in the draw, and that's the way it is. I want, Julie, I got a, no kidding, I got a piece of paper over there in my coat, you know, where I kind of take notes, and I gotta have something in my hand. There's, there are a lot of things that's on the platter right now, and I think we're going into a new era in, for this country. This is the first time, just news, it just, well, forget it. You guys take notes, okay? Okay. It is, we're refocusing our attention on a lot of things, and I think we're trying to re-identify what government is about, who we are, and which direction we should be going, or how we're going to serve the people that send us. I just need to write down something every now and again. Thank you. And I think as long as we do that, because we've always had a focal point ever since World War II of the evil empire, and that's gone, but there's another situation that's, that sort of troubles us across the country, and we try to deal with that. But I think for the most part, we're trying to re-identify what the role of government, who are we, where do we spend our funds, and what do we try to do for the people that actually pull the wagon? So there, on the platter is many issues. In other words, Mr. Clinton's budget and his budget resolution, how much money do you want him to spend on this, on this new, on this new spending package that he wants, and what the controversy has been over in Washington DC the last two or three weeks. And it's been a marvelous philosophical debate, basically on that package, and I think this is probably the first time it's really surfaced as a difference between the two parties on which direction we should go and how we would like to do it. So we have that, we have healthcare reform, we have that kind of a situation, and what should we do with healthcare, extended healthcare, all of these questions and new initiatives that we'll be looking at as this Congress goes forward. We will be renewing three new laws, not new laws, but they are laws that are on the books, but there will be quite a lot of controversy, and something I think in Montana that we will have a lot to stake. We will re-authorize the Endangered Species Act, we will re-authorize the Clean Water Act, we will redefine wetlands, we will, and all of those will be very, very controversial, and some of them very emotional, and what they, for the most part, I think they will be done in this Congress, if not for sure the next Congress. So with that, those are some things on my mind, and what I'd like to take back to Washington, where you're coming from, if you've got an idea on how we could do it better, I'm interested in that too. So with that, I just open it up for questions, and I'll just kick back and listen, and I'll respond as good as I possibly can. I have a bad habit, folks, I was raised sort of simple. My mom, my mom still lives down in Missouri, she was in Washington for the, she come to town to watch the cherry blossoms bloom, they didn't bloom until yesterday. She says my timing never has been very good, you know, but, but mom's doing a little traveling now, she's 84, or almost 84, we're 84 in July. We lost dad in December, and, and, but so I get a lot of, I get a lot of advice on what we should do with our elderly, I'll tell you. And, but she still lives down in Missouri, and she's still my best teacher, but I've got a bad habit. If you ask me a question, I'll tell you I don't know, means I don't know. And, but I tell you what, there's one great thing about being a United States Senator, you can sure find out a lot of sources, the information for you. So we will get back to you as fast as we possibly can. So with that, I would open it up for some questions, and knowing that we've got a little time limit, and I hope you'll go along with that, and it's open. And I thank the commissioners for introducing me. Commission work was my best, my best days. I love commission work. Government closer to the people usually responds to the people much better than the federal government does. So I'd open it up. Yes, sir?
There's a lot of killing amongst the voters, and you hear them say, "Cut the pork, cut the pork."
Pork lock. We're at pork lock right now, right?
Well, what's Congress got against giving the President a line item veto to help cut the pork?
Well, I think, I think Congress, we would love to see him have it. I would, I've been for a line item veto ever since I've been in the United States Senate. Forty-three, forty-three governors have it, and, but you've got one problem. There's one man in the United States Senate that's not gonna let that happen. And he's one man. His name is Robert C. Byrd. And he's just not gonna allow that to happen.
He wants to move the government to West Virginia.
Yeah. It's, when he was talking about this spending package the other day, he said, "Well, he filled the tree." I expect you heard that term, you know. And what he done, he offered a substitute in the form of an amendment to the spending bill, and then he secondary it where you couldn't touch his, but if you amended the original bill, well, then he would call for a vote on his amendment, it would pass and wipe everybody else out. So I figured, well, he, they said he filled the tree. Well, I said, "He put the tree up, he turned the lights on, it's Christmas time for West Virginia again." But I happen to, I happen to like Robert Byrd very much. I don't always agree with him. In fact, I probably won't agree with him 85% of the time. But he is a unique, unique individual, I will tell you that. And, and I like him. Although, you know, in politics, you gotta remember, folks, I may be with you today, I may be opposed to you tomorrow, and that's the way this, this works. And so, but I, I won't agree with him 85% of the time, but he's a unique individual. Yes, sir? Way back in the back, you're right there.
I don't have a question, sir, but I've got a couple things I'd like to see the people in Washington do. One, stop all foreign aid. I think it's absolutely stupid for us to give our money away, but we are terribly, terribly, terribly in debt. Two, stop all immigration. America has far too many people, that's why there's so darn many out of work. They come across our borders from every nation in the world by the thousands every year, and I think we're stupid to say that.
Sir?
Immigration.
Immigration. I thought you said integration.
One other thing on my list is stop the waste in government. Every time you turn on television, 60 Minutes, Dateline, every single program, Reader's Digest, Paul Harvey is wasting government by the millions every month. Stop them. Okay. No tax increases. If we stopped all that baloney, we wouldn't need a tax increase. Last but not least, let's get rid of the criminal element in America. Instead of turning loose upon us every day to kill our kids, rape our women, go through the court system, cost us millions, put the suckers to death. They proved they can't live among us in decency. Give them the death penalty, get rid of them. We're all gonna die anyway, what's the difference? If some jackass proves that he can't, if he proves to the world he can't live among us, let him go a little early. That's it. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. I, I, the young lady right back here, no, you, yes ma'am. Can you stand up, please, and so I can see you, and I know you can see me, 'cause I'm a white body.
Well, I have just another thing, I have two things real important, I think, to say. First of all, the pork business. I have an art dealer that I cut out for the Brazilian not too long ago. They spent $58 million to bail out New York Yankees owner Steinbrenner for his shipbuilding business, $120,000 for a study of animal waste.
Now, that's my deal, that's the flagellants. Stay off that, now, that's my issue.
All these, you read about every day, just like the gentleman said, I don't think they should charge anybody another penny of tax until they get rid of all these ridiculous studies.
Yes, ma'am.
And then on the other side, I can tell you how to fix it, so you don't have to charge anybody any tax. Now, here's what you do. Here's what you do. We import millions of barrels of oil a day from Iran, Iraq, all the oil producing countries. Millions a day. All you do is charge $5 tax on every barrel. You'll have all that money coming in every day, you won't have to charge another person any tax. Take all that money, put it in to the taxes instead of charging, you're talking about 10 cents more gas, or more tax on a gallon of gas with pump, you shouldn't have to pay that. We go over there, we fight their wars for them, we give them aid, we have with them. It doesn't cost them any money to produce that oil, a little bit of money, next to nothing. They give us all that oil, we pay like 20, I think right now it's $22 a barrel.
That's around 18, I think, yeah.
Well, it's gotten as low as 14. They can, that $5 tax isn't gonna hurt them a bit, they'll absorb it, they even lower the price, and that's where you get your money.
Let me tell you, if you put an oil import fee on, you know, that's not a bad idea, and that's an idea that has not been talked about. Make all oil worth $25 a barrel, and though that comes in from offshore, would, would, we'd tax that, but it would also help our local energy producers, our ethanol people, our renewable resources to compete at the pump for that fuel, and that's what we should be doing. We should be shifting from an oil-based anyway over to a renewable resource. But it would also, but it would also help the people in this country to explore for the resources that we have here, if they thought they could get $25 a barrel for it. We would, we would see Montana pick up. Our shortfalls right now in Montana is that we're not exploring for natural gas, there is no, oh, I think there's only one, I, it is less than five rigs going in the state of Montana. Can you imagine that? When, when basically that was our, that was our tax base, that's what paid for a lot of services here in our state.
This is gonna take years before this oil comes in. Meantime, all this oil's coming in.
That's right, I would agree. Sixty-five, let me tell you, 65% of our trade deficit is energy related. Oil, hydro, natural gas, and electricity. 65% of our trade deficit is energy related. So the lady, the lady is right. And, and we tried, by the way, that was attempted in the last energy bill, you know, last year, was an oil import fee, and it didn't make it.
But they're so quick to tax us, let them tax us.
I know, but you're more, you're more vulnerable than they are. You know, they move around. I would, I would agree. I'm gonna, you're next, and I'm gonna man the back of the room.
Beaver?
Yes, sir.
Okay, one of the ways we can replace energy costs is with information, and you've been a leader in promoting telecommunications as a long-term solution to the economic problems we face. I have a three-part question, then. One, tell me where your bill is and what you're planning to do. Two, the Clinton-Gore administration has proposed increasing funding for telecommunications in this area this spring, immediately. Are you supportive of that? And then third, this event is being taped by TCI here today, and major legislation was passed regarding cable companies, and I have written your staff many times about this issue. You've written back saying you support Muscari for local low-power television stations. We would have liked to have been here taping today, but we were not aware the TCI would be. Can we work together better in the future?
Yeah, you bet, we'd like to, in fact. Let me, let me go over what we're doing. I am, I am the ranking member on the Commerce Committee as far as science and technology and NASA. And we have had our first meeting with the administration on where they want to go with a broadband telecommunications policy in this country. When Senator Gore, then Senator Gore, and I was working on S-1200, the bill that we had in the last Congress, he was for the government building the fiber spine, in other words, to put in a superhighway to move information. And I, I was just the other way around. I thought the change in policy, the expertise and the money was there, and the government wouldn't have to spend any money, alls we'd have to do is change some policy, and we could get it done. I am still of that belief. And, and now the administration is, we had our first meeting, and they, and they also agree with me now that with our national debt and the shortage of dollars, it has to be done in the private sector. And, but there's some, there's some, there's some caveats to this now, because what we envision is broadband telecommunications to every home, medical facility, business, school in America. Those industries that move and wants to move or receive tremendous amount of information very rapid. And I happen to believe, I sincerely believe, that our small-town America, the quality of life here, we have to start looking at ways to promote commercial endeavors that is not tied directly to natural resources in our, in our, in our towns, in our rural areas, in order to protect our quality of life there. And, and you're right, on transportation, 395, folks, which I drive every day, I live 19 miles out of the district. A lot of my work, I could tele-compute. But 395 is four lanes wide plus two lanes in HOV, which high occupancy vehicle, which means I have to have three people in my car to drive that, that fast lane. Now, I don't know three other people out there in my neighborhood, I do, but they don't go to the same place I do. But I pick up hitchhikers, and they got a little, I pick them up, and you, and you pick them up, and you, and then you drop them off at the Pentagon, and you don't know who they are, and they don't know who you are, and it works out just fine. And you can just zip into work. I got 19 miles to go. I was, there was, there's one drawback there, however. I was listening to a couple of people talk, they didn't know me from a Bayla Hay. And the strangest conversation I'd ever heard. And I turned around, I asked one of the fellows, I said, "Where do you work?" And he says, "I work for the Department of the Army." And I said, "Our side?" Conversation quit. I didn't learn anymore. But, but, in other words, that is the largest parking lot in the country from 6 o'clock in the morning until 9 o'clock in the morning. We have to do things smarter. The gentleman is right. And with some policy change, we can do them right, because you'll, you'll travel, your information will travel on glass, on glass. It's fiber optics. And so, we're a very, we're a sincere promoter of that, and I think, I think we're gonna get something done. We have not reintroduced this year for the simple reason, the administration, we thought we would try to partner up with the administration, there's no use going in there and, and you know, just butting heads. So when we go, we hope we'll have a bill that will pass whenever we reintroduce, and that's where we are. You never, you never cut back on the point of delivery as far as a service or support to agriculture. That's where we need it. We've got 1,200, you wanna think about that, 1,200 economists that work for the USDA, and they, every one of them, agree with each other. No, they don't, they just don't do it. So what I wanted to do, I wanted to fire, I wanted to fire all of them in Washington, and let's leave our people alone out here that deliver the, and, that deliver the goods. Are you generally in favor of one-stop shopping? I heard that up on the High Line where FMHA, ASCS, and SES will be all in one office.
I was sure I'd go along with that.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir. Fritz, how are you?
Pretty good. Conrad, how are you doing?
Well, I'll tell you what, I've done, I've done better.
I was glad to hear that you wished you were back being a county commissioner again.
I probably couldn't get elected again.
Conrad, I've got a question on the deficit, and I guess Clinton's proposed budget that is about $1.5 trillion. Of that amount, Social Security is 21%, interest on the debt is 14.4%, defense is 21.8%, and other entitlements, which is Medicare, Medicaid, lots of other things like that, I guess, bee subsidies, wheat subsidies, tobacco subsidies, et cetera, is 31.8%. What I want you to do is tell me how we are ever going to cut the deficit, unless we get after the entitlements. And I would also go on to say, "I'm a good Democrat, but I'm interested in seeing the deficit reduced. I think it's killing the country."
First, I appreciate your comments on that, so's my mother.
I knew there was some good in you.
I tell you what she did the other night, we had this little function, you know, and this man asked, a reporter asked mom, says, "How come if you served on the State Democratic Committee in Missouri, what happened to your son?" And mom, in her 83-year-old knowledge, she says, "He just got too far away from home." You're right, we cannot unless we do something with entitlements. To your surprise maybe, let's talk a little bit about the President's, the President's budget, and let's, now, I haven't analyzed what he sent up on Thursday, okay? So it'd be unfair for me to say anything, but I can tell you about the resolution that we passed. He does not cut, we hear two words kicked around, and they're used interchangeably, deficit and debt. Folks, we deficit spend. That is the difference between what we take in and what we spend. This in here is the deficit. In the meantime, we accumulate debt. If we took the President's budget, or if we'd have taken President Bush's budget, let's don't, let's don't make no bones here, if we dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's and accepted what President Clinton wanted right now, at the end of four years, we will have accumulated, depending on what interest rates do, and nobody can forecast that, another $980 billion to $1.4 trillion of new debt put on top of the $4.2 trillion that we have now. We will spend this year $223 billion in interest rates to serve the national debt. This is what I have said, and I've been crying about ever since I've been there. Let's be honest with the American people and tell them where we stand. And I think if there's one advantage to Ross Perot, he did make America focus on that. He did that. He did that. We've been out cranking around this thing for a long time, but he could buy television, he's got more money than old Conrad's got. And, and he could do that, but he, but he focuses. Now, how are we gonna do that? In 1990, I introduced, along with 10 other senators, one Democrat, by the way, in there, what we call the 4% solution. We dealt with, with entitlements. And what we said was in 1990, do away with baseline budgeting. Each line can grow 4% only based on previous year's expenditures. Fritz, you love it. I'm ranking on DC appropriations. You know, and a city's just kinda like a county. This guy comes in the other day, and he's gonna give me a snow job on city budget, and I said, "Man, if you got it." I went looking for a gravel road, we bought $180,000 worth of gravel for one gravel road the last six years, went out there and ain't even rolled there. And, and you know, and they think they're fiddling around with some old country boy here. But anyway, what I wanna get to is that we said grow 4% based on previous year's expenditures, not previous year's baseline. Baseline budgeting starts six, automatic 6%. Then they'll put 6% over top of that, and really we're growing 12, but they tell you 6. And that's wrong. That is, that is not being honest with the American people. We've been crabbing on that since 1989. So 1990, I put the bill in, got some, and Dick Army of Texas over in the House of Representatives did the same thing. If we had done that, we would be two years away from balancing, and nobody would have had to take a cut. Nobody. Now, the increases though, would not have been in some areas near what they have been the last three years. So, and it's a very simple thing to do. Now, because we didn't do it in 1990, I don't think 2%, let it grow 2% Fritz, would, would get us there now. And that's how much this thing has jumped in the last, in the last two years, the last two budget cycles. Something else we gotta do, we gotta make a two-year budget. This yearly budget thing is crazy, is crazy. On appropriations, and I'm on appropriations this time, that's what I say, Max taxes you, I spend it. He's on Finance Committee, he figures out the way to, way to tax you. And appropriations, we spend the money. On appropriations, we only deal with 30, I think 34% of the budget. The rest of it, we can't touch, 'cause it says entitlements. It says you make so much, or you drive so much a car, or whatever it is, you're entitled to the money. And, and, and we've got to, and we've got to do something about that. We have to do something about that. And because we, those of us who worked in county government, understand, we can't do that at the county level. And so that's, that's the end of that story. You had your hand up, and thank you for coming.
John Hunneman, I got a different tact. I think this personal liberty stuff, this, I mean, we had a case here in eastern Montana, where there's a couple was in their high 70s or early 80s. These federal agents come out there on a whim, charge off on their places, they don't even bother to inform the local sheriff, they bring a CNN news crew, they go and they confiscate two pickups. Now, what's to stop these people from doing this to every person in the United States? They busted into a guy's house in Tulsa, Oklahoma on a rumor that he had an automatic weapon, completely destroyed his house, left him a note, "Sorry, we didn't find anything in lymph." And as far as that goes, as far as I'm concerned, the attack in Waco, Texas is about as good a Gestapo or KNVD operation as anything. They could have picked this guy up off the streets, he runs around town all the time, why bust into his place? I think this is a real personal freedom thing. I think the bureaucracy is out of control, and they're gonna run us right in the ground if we don't do something. I got another thing on big creek water users, I could talk about that too.
We'll do that, we'll do that in a little bit. Let me comment on that. I was in Jordan Thursday. You talking about a hot button, folks. I walked into that thing, I didn't really know what all the details were, but boy, I do now. He is right, 25 fish, wildlife, US Fish and Wildlife jumped on these two old people under suspicion of poisoning eagles. It was a SWAT team operation, and they took along a CNN news crew. Now, they've got everybody gagged, the judges got everybody gagged. I had a fellow that works for US Fish and Wildlife tell me, "Well, yes, we had a warrant." And I said, "Are you sure you had a warrant?" And I, and I, we got... And, and I, and I, and we got people working on this, by the way, big time. We're, we're spending some funds on this one. I don't care who you are, nobody is above constitutional law. Nobody. In this country, and especially this government. And once we start disregarding, once, once we start disregarding that, then we are a totalitarian government. And it's very, very dangerous. And I'll tell you what, it's not only happened with that agency, it also happened with some IRS people. And it also happened with the same agency at Ridgate, Montana, you heard about that? And, and they never found, and this, and this old couple is 80 years old, burger rants. He married a lady that was single till she was 65. I've known her forever. Used to shepherd cattle, Billings Live. Forever. These old people are old. And they couldn't find anything where they'd been poisoning eagles. And they run a sheep operation up there. And, on the CMR. And it was just, it was just a terrible, terrible thing. But you're just exactly right. We're, we're spending some, we're spending some time with that. Yes, sir.
You're saying about Perot, got about 20% of the votes, a little less. It's pretty hard for people to leave the party that they've been supporting for a long time. That 20% is just the tip of an iceberg, which people are trying to say, "We are very unhappy with the way the government is managing our affairs." That's, but for some reason, when elections get done, the people that are back there can't seem to remember that type of thing. Now, you're saying the Endangered Species Act is an example you're going to reenact.
Reauthorize.
Reauthorize. I would think that in its present form, if you ask 99, you'd find 99% of the people do not want it. If you can revise a mining law, which has worked, which gave us freedom and rights to take away those, why can you not revise that act? That's just one example of what you people can do. There's not, I would say, if you go to many of the smaller, or many organizations that have sprung up since the election, or have gotten more strength, much more strength since, you'll find that 90% of them are against many of these things. They do not want government. They want less government. They're pleading for less government, less regulations, less government employees. They want their government employees also to be responsible to them, not arrogant people to come out here and dictate to people. And take upon themselves the usurp of Congressism and your authority, make their own rules and regulations. People are very, very unhappy with that. I don't know why it cannot be stated to them more clearly than that.
Well, I, I would agree that you have a, a great point. I also want to remind you that it takes 51 votes. It boils down to 51. We have, we have 40, in fact, the greatest, if you're, the debate over this, over this $16 billion spending package, is a, is a great debate on philosophy more than anything else. We're saying that let's see the cuts before we see any more taxes or any more spending. That's what we're seeing. Now, there is, there is, there is a, there is a, now, there's parts of this spending package that I, that I would support. I think we ought to extend some of that unemployment in some areas where there's some hurt. I, and, and I think there, and I don't have any problems with the immunization. I don't think any of Americans all have any problems with immunization in our childcare. I think there has to be some responsibility with it. I think that some of that is family responsibility, but there are some kids that's not getting their shots. Now, my wife teaches school, happy's a clamp. I'll tell you, tell you about that too. She hasn't been too happy since I've been back there, but she finally got a job teaching. She's teaching four-year-olds. And she's killing them in money, $15 a day. Everybody's saying, "Gosh, that must be gone money." Nah, anyway, but, but there was, this was a great philosophical debate, and, of, of what we should do. Now, during that debate, I want to tell you something. I got two boxes full of cards. There's over 10,000 in those boxes to say, "No more spending till you, let's, let's cut spending before you do even think about any more taxes." Do you know where, where they were from? I put them on the floor of the United States Senate, I brought them down there. You know where those cards were from? Butte, Montana. Now, that is not the bastion of republicanism. And, and, and you, and, and we're right, but remember, the only way that we could slow that thing down is the way we use the rules to slow it down. And, and, and we stood together, but you remember, we can't pass anything, but we can stop a lot of stuff. And we, and we've stopped this one, to where I think we'll be able to negotiate this thing out, to where it's sensible. Now, the highway funds, let's let them highway funds come, they're already paid for. They come out of the trust fund. They don't go on the national debt. But what we're saying is, don't, don't put any more, and, and I sort of represent the kids that can't dial telephones and, and send telegrams. Don't put any more on the, on the, on the national debt. Hang on, I've got, I got one right over here.
I was wondering if you could outline to me specifically what it is that you do not like about the economic stimulus program, and what precisely you would change to make that happen.
I would, I would, here's what I would, here's what I can accept. The rest of it I can forego. Can accept the unemployment extension, can accept the highway funds. There is a small summer jobs thing for youth in some of the other cities that, that I could, that I could support. And, and the, and the immunization.
Well, since most of us really don't know what's in that program in detail...
The rest of it is, is, is the promise that the president made to the mayors of America.
What, where are those promises?
Uh, there, they are swimming pools, there are warming houses, they are, they are just, and I'll tell you what, now, I would, you're gonna kill me.
How about jogging?
One, huh?
Jogging tracks?
Yep, jogging tracks. But anyway, this person calls me out of the White House, you know, the White House has got their, a policy shop downstairs, you know, and this person calls me up, says, "Senator, you've got to support this, because in this is a bicycle path for Helena." Now, now, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. That really didn't throw me all that much. Now, for Hamilton, I might've considered it, but you know. No, but here's the point, here's the point. The point is that those kind of jobs, yes, they are important, sometimes they're unimportant. But all of these things were in there. And, and so, what we're saying is that, look, let's take care of the hurt. Let's take care of the hurt. I don't have any trouble out here with helping, helping people that, that, you know, that fall on hard times. Don't have any problem with that. Don't have any problem with that. But jobs creation does not come from government. It comes from the private sector. Yes, sir, right here. Now, I'll be, you're next. So, and right back there, I, I pointed to him, and I'll be to you. You're number two.
All I wanted to do is to, to say, we folks in the back would like to know what the questions are too. We can't necessarily hear the questions, so maybe you could read, re, repeat the questions that those folks answer in front. We'll get an answer from you, but we're not really sure what the question was.
Okay, the question was, what I liked about the package, and, and it's not a stimulus package.
What percentage is actually, was actually the question? What percentage of that program, in terms of the money, are you saying is going to things like building swimming pools and bicycle paths?
Two-thirds of it.
Two-thirds is going to swimming pools and bicycles?
Two-thirds of it. I mean, almost, I'll tell you what, what I, what I gave you would cost a little, about seven, a little over seven, and the whole stimulus, or so-called stimulus, was 60 and a half. And, and that road, all the roads money is paid for. The unemployment's already paid for, 'cause we voted on that already. You know? So, uh, you know, the, the impact on the national debt would have been rather marginal. And, and even, you know, his own people, Senator Bro and Senator Boren says, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, my people are, are not saying this in Louisiana or Oklahoma." They're not. They're saying, they're saying, "Hey, if there's, if there's something out here to take care of, let's take care of it, but let's just don't commit $16 billion all in one year." Or two years, what, I think it's two years, I think it's a two-year spending thing. But no, right here, I, this man right here.
This NAFTA treaty in my book is a total disaster for this country. I'd like to know where you stand on that. And also, I'd like to say that I think this log export, raw log export to foreign countries should also be totally stopped.
It's immoral.
The jobs here.
It's immoral.
It is.
It's immoral. A one country should never, now, the question was, he's opposed to the NAFTA, wants to know what my position on NAFTA is, and the export of raw logs. And I said, "The export of raw logs is immoral. It is totally immoral." The export of any raw resource from any nation is immoral. That's why, that's why we got workers, that's why we have, that's why we have part, uh, people that can, that can saw and fit and, 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 and send a finished product. If those people want, wants our products, we can send it to them finished, 'cause we've got, we've got, we've got the workers here and the talent to do it. That's number one. I was part of that. I was, Bob Packwood of Oregon and I passed the raw logs off, off of public lands. We got that law through. We didn't get it through for private lands. But I think we all should appeal to the private companies on private lands, that I think they got a moral responsibility to this country. To this country. To, to add value to those, I, I said, ever since you've heard, of course, she didn't hear me on the air a lot when I was a foreign broadcaster, I didn't cuss, I used to, but, I said then, "We shouldn't be shipping wheat, we ought to be shipping flour." You know, well, that's what we should be doing, but flour's a little, a little harder to preserve, and, and I can see some of that. But okay, now NAFTA. We got a double-bitted axe here. It swings both ways. Until they get a better arrangement or mechanism to resolve trade disputes, I will oppose NAFTA. I'm on record as opposing it now, under, under, under this. But I want, I want to, I want, now, that, there is a, there is a, an exception to that. We got wheat and cattle coming across the Canadian line like you can't believe in the Canadian Free Trade Act. We can't stop that wheat from coming in up, on, on the High Line, okay? We don't have a mechanism in which to resolve that trade dispute, uh, to get, to get it settled out, where it's fair for both countries. And, and the same mechanism is in NAFTA. So as long as that same works as there, I will oppose it, okay? There are also another part of this. 33 million people live within 50 miles of downtown Mexico City. They're migrating north. If we put the Marine Corps, the Army, the Air Force, and everything else on that border, we can't keep those people out of this country. They're gonna go where they can work, and they'll lie, and they'll, and they, and they will risk death to do it, because of their living conditions in Mexico. Some way or other, through some brain, we have absolutely got to broaden their economy to raise their standard of living, because on the, now, where we have wheat and cattle coming into Montana that impacts our markets, down there in Arizona, New Mexico, Texas, California, they've got millions of people that's impacting their welfare system. And it's absolutely breaking their states. We cannot take care of those people. We gotta give them a reason to stay at home. Now, is NAFTA the right way to go? I think under the current president, it is, if the mechanism is fixed. And we answer some of those environmental qualities, and we answer some, some of the, some of the conditions of which their workers work. But I think with this president, he, he's got a lot of guts, folks. This little guy has got a lot of guts. You know, he closed the only refinery down there because of pollution, and that took a lot of guts. It's the only thing that's making any money in Mexico. The only thing. And, and he did that. So, he's got guts enough to do it. But we still gotta work on some way, because we can't keep a neighbor that close to our front porch that poor. It cannot be done. We have to do something. And right way, in essence, we have, there is a free trade agreement. Oh, you're gonna, uh, there is a free trade agreement, but it's only one way. We'd like to have a little more access to their market down there. So, uh, where are we? Are we coming up on time? Yes, sir, you've had your hand up, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to just ask one question. You know, you talk about pork in the, in the federal government. I've written a few times, you know, Conrad, about the US Congress, and about the 30,000 employees that they have back there. And I'd ask that you start at home on cleaning that mess up, because you've got too many people employed in the US Congress.
I agree. We tried to do away with, we got some select committees done away with. We, we got those stand out. Now, what they're gonna do, those people, I don't know, because they come up, I think, the first of May, they've got to find another home for them. We have, we have done that. I've got the smallest staff there. But it's not the senator's personal staff is where we're hurting. It's committee staff. Now, we cut the commer, we cut the small business staff about 25%. By the way, the president cut his staff 25%, but I noticed his request for money the other day was 18% more money, and I wonder where, I guess, to give everybody, the rest of them all a raise. Uh, I haven't figured that out yet. But, but we, and, and, and we've got too many staff on those committees. That's, that's where it's at. That is exactly where it's at. I'm gonna take two more, and there's the first one.
Looking at this package for creating jobs, could we do something better with not giving these large corporations, manufacturing corporations, with giant tax breaks to move their, their companies out of the country?
They're not getting any tax breaks moving out of the country, no more than the other countries move in here to create jobs. That's a two-way, that's a two-way trade too. You gotta be very careful about, about the way you attack that, because if, say if, 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 if whoever moved a plant to Mexico, now, it's not the taxes, the tax break, we give them, it may be the tax breaks that Mexico gives them, but we also give some tax breaks to Mitsubishi to build their cars in Kentucky, to employ our people here. So, that's a, that's a two-way axe. But there is, there's, if there's, if there's some inequity there, let's, let's take care of it. But, I mean, but we're talking principle now, and, and he's saying, you know, about corporations moving, getting a tax break, moving out. You know, I, I still say, if you want to stimulate an economy, you can do two things, two things, just like this, and it'll happen. Investment tax credit.
Yes.
And capital gains.
Yes.
And, and, and get some, and get some, and take care of some regulation. Get them off, get them off your back. And, and, and I'm telling you, it will, it will get things heated up and, and going. I'm going, man's right here's had his hand up, right here, and, yes, sir.
I have to do with water in the wilderness area, a big creek, canyon creek, we have a lot of dams. You know, I'd like to ask, there's some thing coming up in Congress, RS 247 report, 2477 report, and we'd kinda like to get together with you, or some way of communicating with your office and getting some answers to what's going on.
Okay. Uh, I'll tell you what we'll do.
It'll take too long to explain it all here, and I know you're short of time.
Are we gonna, are we gonna have any time, Julie, on, I don't think, not on this trip, but can we?
This is June the 3rd of May in 93, and it wasn't put out until November 30th of 92. And it's a very short timeframe.
Just make sure you got the, his information, have you got it already?
Yeah, I've been working with the courts, I'll talk to you later.
Okay. All right, we'll get, we'll get on it, we'll get on it right away.
Can I talk to everyone when you're done?
Yep. We'll get on it right away. Yes, sir. I'm a glutton for punishment.
The president asked for specific cuts. What about the Super Collider, the NASA Space Station, and the Seawolf submarines?
Well, the Seawolf, I would, I, I voted against the Seawolf. I voted for the NASA appropriation, although it was cut back. Our, our NASA program, I'm, I, I like that program, because I think it's gonna go off of national defense, and I think it's gonna tell us more about ourselves, but it could be cut back. Um, and I, I really believe there's a, there's a future there for this society, okay? I really believe that. The Super Collider, I, I've got no feeling one way, I mean, I I mean, I could vote against that. In fact, I did vote against it this last time around. And -- huh?
Texas pork.
Well, but them Texans has got to have it. You know, that's the way --
That's trouble. They all got to have it.
Yeah. And I told Phil Grandma's going to vote against it from Texas, and he says, I said, "We don't get no money in Montana for that thing." Well, he said, "I'll make sure you get some." And I said, "Well, it's got to be there by next Monday." But no, we're just kidding about that. But you're right. But some of this R&amp;D stuff that, say, looks, sounds kind of funny, such as the collider and a scaled-down model maybe of space, we're going to continue, we have to continue to do some of those things. We have to do some of those things because I think our research and development in the technologies are going to go another direction. I think MHD, which is going to be struggling and should be phased out, but that's my pork. But I'll tell you where I think it's going to be a great service is high-temperature incineration for toxics and medical waste. We've got to start making those kinds of applications and find out if it will work before we start jumping off into deeper water. I want to thank you all for coming this morning. I hope you found it informative and stay in touch with our office because, just like I said, I like your ideas a lot better than their ideas out here. We have a pretty open-door policy in our office, and we sure like working with you folks. And anytime -- we're only a telephone call away. Just pick it up. We've got an 800 number. I suppose you got that, too. But we usually try to get back with our people pretty darn fast.
Conrad?
Yes.
The Stevensville American Indian is having a barbecue for you tonight. Make sure they barbecue pork.
Let me tell you a funny story on this pork thing. We got the darnedest, we really got a hot letter from the national pork producers. Thirty years we've been trying to take the fat out of these hogs and make it the lean the other white meat. Thirty years! And I can relate to that, by the way. And said, "Guys, in two weeks, you darn politicians put us right back in the lard again." So we had to sort of apologize to those folks. But again, we thank you for your letters, and we appreciate -- that's one great thing about representing Montana. And I've found this ever since I've been, I lived here. I come up here in the early '50s the first time, permit in 1962, is that you're pretty open, you're pretty blunt. It doesn't take long to find out what you think. But I think, just like I said about the parole thing, if he's done us anything, he's made us focus on some very, very important things about this country. And I will put my voting record against anybody else's on these issues, on fiscal issues that I really feel very deeply about, and some social issues that I feel very deeply about. Thank you very much. I hope you had a nice Easter.
Still working on my possible bag.
Well, that's good.
We looked at you, and you answered us, and thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
We have a small manufacturing business here in the valley.
Yep.
And --
Yeah.
Harold Moss.
Hi, Harold.
This coverage of Senator Conrad Burns's town meeting was provided by TCI Cable Vision of Montana Incorporated as a public service to the Hamilton community. The following is presented by TCI Cable Vision of Montana Incorporated as a public service to the Missoula community.
We're -- we'll be talking about not only fiscal responsibility, but the aims and the desires of the new administration, where we think it should go. We also, national health care reform, which is on the platter, in which the First Lady is very actively engaged in trying to redirect or to reestablish the way we deliver health care in this country, trying to take care of some of our most unfortunate folks. And all of those things are being talked about in Washington, D.C., of course, with the way communications is now. Everything that we do in Washington is instant. I heard of a fellow that has served in the Senate a long time the other day, and I have weekly visits with him. And he said, you know, years and years ago, when he first come to the Senate, he said, "We heard about a problem in Washington, D.C. about two weeks after the problem become evident to the local folks," as much where most problems start. It took us about three weeks to consider the problem and two weeks to act, and then two weeks to get the information back to the people. By that time, the problem had gone away. Now, we live in a world where, no matter what kind of problem it is, it is instant. And we think we have to make an instant decision, and sometimes those decisions are not too good when they're made from Washington, D.C. But our world has changed, and we are drawn closer to our foreign neighbors and, yes, to our own selves here by the inventions of three -- there's been three distinct inventions that has changed our lives forever, and we can never go back, that has basically drawn this world in comparison from the size of this building in which we sit to the size of a golf ball. And that changed the way we do business and how we react as government. Those three inventions was the transistor, the silicon chip, and the jet engine. We can talk to anybody in any other part of the world in 15 seconds. And we can, with a transistor, we can, our electronics just absolutely blossomed and bloomed and doing things electronically now that we never dreamed was possible. The jet engine gave us a way that we can physically be in any other part of the world in 12 hours from Missoula, Montana. And we can also, sadly say, destroy any other country on the face of this earth in less than 20 minutes. So we, our times have changed. The way we approach our problems is just a little bit different. So all those are all questions that's on your mind and questions that would loom in the area of western Montana and Missoula, and you're here. And so I am here to listen, and if I don't know, you ask me a question, and I don't have the answer to it, I'll tell you I don't know. But there's a wonderful thing about representing this state, that the state that we know how to find out the information and we'll sure get back to you. And so we appreciate you coming this morning and sitting and sitting with us and started talking over some of the problems that we have in mutual. So thank you for coming, and I will open it up for questions or comments at this time. Yes, ma'am. No, I don't know how we're going to do this. We've never, this is not a formal hearing or anything like it. I just like to visit, you know? And I want everybody, as time would allow, to get their comments because we're interested in those comments. So, okay.
Can I go first, Senator? Thank you for coming to Missoula. And I think you're someone who listens well, from what I've heard.
Kind of like a mule.
Well, that's fine. As long as you listen. I'm like a third-generation Montanan, and I hear a lot about, you know, a lot, one of the big issues right here at home is our national forests. And I hear a lot of talk about how the Montanans and some of our people in Washington think that the decisions about our local national forests in Montana are something to be decided by local communities. I think this is, even though I'm from Montana, I think this is really dangerous. I think that these national forests should be something that should be of national concern. Every year, there's more and more people coming to see our national parks, our national forests. It's going to continue to grow. I would like to know, and I've asked Senator Bockus this, how realistic is it to have me take a poll of Americans about our national forests in Montana regarding the decisions we're making here? And Senator Bockus dismissed that as being unrealistic. I want to know how easy it is for you in the Senate. Does the Senate have the means to make, to take polls into about, like, the national forests in Montana? How easy would that be for you to do, to include more of the nation in the decisions? Or whether you think that is indeed appropriate, or you think that the decision should be made just by local communities? I think that this could be dangerous if they're just made done by local communities because local communities, we know, are very dependent on, can be dependent on the national forests, et cetera, and not realize how, what little we have left in our nation since right here in Montana. And it is a big national issue. And I wonder what he tells about that. Anyway, my name is Richard Toile. Thanks again for --
Thank you, Rich. I would say probably it'd be pretty tough to take a national poll as far as attitudes on our public land. You can take a poll on anything. Now, the information that you derive from polls is how the question is asked, voice inflection, what questions are in all of this. And I'm pretty sure that a person that lives in Shenandoah, Iowa, would not have a real strong knowledge of the management of our national forests because just from where they are, their knowledge is limited to that. And you get a different attitude from people, I find this anyway, that come from states that has limited amounts of public lands. In other words, they, now, I had to learn this. I was raised in northwest Missouri. We didn't have the public lands down there. When I first come to Montana, I didn't know the impact of water rights and, because we never had to file water rights in Missouri. We had creeks, and we had wells, and everybody kind of took care of their own. So I had to go through a learning process, and also a learning process on how we deal with our BLM and our Forest Service up here because we didn't have those elements in Missouri. So it's a learning process. So what you, the attitude that you get could be skewed because of a limited information or a limited knowledge on renewable resources. Let's face it, we have a national mindset right now that is a little uncertain on how this nation feeds and clothes itself. You go into Philadelphia and you talk to some people, and they don't have a clue what is involved in this business of food and fiber. And some of the suggestions that you might make as far as national policies concerned come to form whenever we had the snowstorms in Washington. We had forecasts, remember that snowstorm, this one, two, three weeks ago? Every time it gets iced out, I used the personal number. I had it back there, a film broke my nose, which was, looked pretty good. But anyway, when they forecast that snow and ice, everybody went to the grocery store, and by 9 o'clock Friday night, they'd sold out. And there was absolutely a little bit of a panic. My gosh, they don't have any more food. And when you go and tell a group of people that there are only, at best, 90 days' supply of food in the pipeline in the United States of America, then that gives me cause to concern about how do we feed and clothe a society that I think is probably one of the basics as far as we're concerned. So I think you get a kind of skewed attitude. So be that as it may, I appreciate your suggestion. I want to move it down here. Thank you. I'm going, yeah, and I'll come to Ward 3 over there. Yes.
I think we said about the amount of money that we have wasted on defense spending. We've spent billions, millions of dollars on military weapons, training other countries in general warfare and that sort of thing. And I'm really concerned about all this coming back as, I mean, we're feeling, we're having , we're facing the problems now of all the waste that we have spent on military weapons. And one of the things I'd like to ask of you is to support ending nuclear weapons testing and to really reduce our military budget to a sensible level and to stop training people in killing, but in training in conflict resolution and peaceful ways of settling our international and national problems.
And look forward to that. Yes, sir.
I have two concerns. The first one is the national spending, which there's been a clear mandate at all on the last elections, and people felt like they wanted to see that national debt reduced. From what I've seen, the jobs thing that's tied up in the Senate now, or he's calling it a jobs package, I see it as more just spending. $16 billion would cost $90,000 per job to create 219,000 jobs. I don't know how he can, in good conscience, and when I say he, I mean President Clinton, propose a bill like that. And the other one, the other concern that I have has to do with the morality and ethics, not only in our government but throughout our society. I think that to see the President of the United States stand up at his first press conference where he was asked about this jobs bill or the jobs package that he presented and said, "Do you read these bills? And, you know, was this in there?" And he said, "No." Well, I sent away for a copy of that bill, and the swimming pools in Puerto Rico and things are in there. And he just lied to the national media and to the people of the United States. And when it goes all the way to the President of the United States, and we, the people that elected him, have the responsibility for that, too, where is our morality? Where are our ethics? And how are we ever going to cut the national debt if we just continue to spend? The only thing that I saw cut was the defense budget. And like the lady that just spoke, I think we're all happy to see a cut there, but we want to see cuts throughout. I mean, there's, obviously, the defense is not the only area to cut. There's major, major waste currently, and none of it's being addressed. In fact, just with this $16 billion package is just more waste that I see. And I'm really concerned with the lottery and for the directions we're heading unless we get a grasp on that. In 1963, it's been 30 years now since we took prayer out of the public schools. People are concerned about rape, they're concerned about, you know, abortions, they're concerned about all of these different issues, but they all go back to morality, to the basic fundamentals that this country was founded on. George Washington, Benjamin Franklin, all of the founders of this country all expressed an interest in Christian morality and ethics, and they said that it couldn't be separated from government, and if it did, that government would collapse. And I just see that we've gotten so far away from it that we need to get back to that. And those are just two real concerns.
The, let's talk about the borrow and spending bill of the president. It has emergency in there, which means that it can be done without, with any regard to any budget agreements. In other words, it's borrow the money and spend the money. And you can't explain it any other way for the American people. I, as the debate rolled out on that in the Senate, I got a couple of boxes of cards with real names and real people and real addresses and real televisions. with real names and real people and real addresses and real telephone numbers telling me, "Do not consider any more new taxes until we do something about spending or getting our fiscal house in order." There's ten thousand of those cards. They came from Butte, Montana. That is not the bastion of republicanism. But I think people, and I would have to say at this point, that Mr. Perot in the last election highlighted and drew it out for the American people of the route that we're on. And, and I would, I don't know whether it's fair to plug boots or not, books or not, but if you have an opportunity to drop by your bookstore and pick up the book Bankrupt Nineteen Ninety-Five, written by Harry Figgy, and a preface that was written by my colleague and good friend Warren Rudman of, he just retired from the United States Senate, it would be, it would be good reading. If you could read it in one evening, it's not, it's not heavy. You can read it in one evening and I think it's very fun, very, very active. But he's right. We have, we have got to find ways to, to pay for all of these problems that were, that are all this spending that we want to do. And we can. We can. But we've also got to understand that we got to, and I want to identify, and if I probably ask everybody in this room to define deficit, I would say everybody in this room could probably define it. They can also define debt. But to the average man on the street, debt and deficit are interchanged too much. And so they mean the same, although they relate to one another, or one relates to the other very closely, we fail. Now, we say that the President, the administration of the Congress wants to bring down the deficit. The deficit, folks, is the difference between the money we take in and the money we spend. Back in the middle is deficit. While we deficit spend, we amass or accumulate debt. And I don't think we've done a very good job in being honest with the American people. That you could take, now I can't comment on the new budget that has come up because we haven't been through all of it yet. But from the resolution, the resolution, if you dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's and, and put the periods where they're supposed to be and all the commas where they're supposed to be and all the figures where they're supposed to be, in a four years, even though the deficit has narrowed and come down, we still would accumulate depending on the interest rate, from nine hundred and sixty to one point two trillion dollars in new debt piled on top of the four point two that we have now. Now, that's fact. And I don't think we have been very honest with the American people in, in not telling them that because I don't have any problems, I didn't have any problems as commissioner and local government saying, "Okay, if you want this, folks, this is what it's going to cost you." And, and I think we should continue to do that. If you want national health reform, this is what it's going to cost you. X amount of dollars. And, or if you want, and we talked about a bridge this morning on here over the, over the Bitter River. And, and so, but we've got to figure out, yes, we want a new bridge and yes, we want to access the lands, but it's going to cost money. And I mean, you just don't pay for it with a gun draw and, and garage sale. And it costs real money, as folks say. And so we haven't been very honest with people. We think some things are free and some things are not free. So, and that's the way, that's the way the process was supposed to. And I would hope that it is still working that way. People come home and have got political courage to come up or their constituents say, "Okay, I voted for this, but it's going to cost you money." Or if you want me to vote for that, it's going to cost you some money. And so, and I think that was, I think that was a debate in Washington through this whole thing, is yes, we have no problem spending the money, but let's pay, let's pay, let's don't pass that debt on to the generations. Yes, sir. Be right with you. I'll keep you in mind.
Ed Mosher is the name. I'm commander of the Disabled American Veterans Chapter here in Missoula. And I think I represent also the eight thousand veterans in this, in Missoula and in the environment. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that the government owes the veteran a living, but I think it does owe them, it's very interesting. Okay. Now, there's only two items I'd like to bring to the attention of you and the people here present. As I said, there's some eight thousand veterans in Missoula area, many of whom who are permanently disabled. And the Congress of the United States is considering striking those disabled at the rate, for a disabled at the rate of twenty percent and under from receiving any disability payments. True, the US Congress will save about nine billion dollars in doing this. Of course, we're sending tens of billions of dollars to Russia to aid their predicament. And how about the old adage, charity begins at home? Now, we have had approved for the last few years, an outpatient clinic here in Missoula to avoid transporting seventy and eighty-year-old veterans over to the Veterans Hospital in, at Fort Harrison in Hilton. Now, this has been approved for several years, but we haven't received any funding for it. Now they have come up with a, a new bill, which they want to make a traveling outpatient clinic that has a bus that travels around the state. Well, I don't know, does, does a veteran wait to have a heart attack till the bus comes? Or he's suffering from a terrific amount of pain? He's got to wait there till, till the bus comes to his area? I, I think what we need, and now the hospitals here in Missoula and all the medical facilities have been behind this program ever since it was innovated, there's the outpatient clinic. And I would like to see this funded ahead of the movie of the union.
Well, I think, I want to hang, I want to ask you a couple of questions. Would you favor changing the direction of the VA to where you could enter local hospitals and the VA could have taken?
I would.
Other words, why, you know, when we get into talking about national health reform, we have to ask ourselves a lot of questions before we, we, we make a final decision. One of them is, in national health reform, do we take in VA under that umbrella? Do we take in workers' comp? Do we take in any health service? Do we, I mean, there's a whole Medicaid and this whole thing. And we have to answer those questions. We, because you can't not answer them and not really look at the problem. But I have favored with very little success. By the way, I'm on VA appropriations now. And I would hope we could help that, but I think we can, we can help it if our veterans, if risk management and health reform is very important. And if everybody wants the government to run health insurance, take a look on how they run VA. And boy, it's scary. And, and I just think that that's what we dealt with and I concur with you. But what I would like to see then is our veterans have access to local hospitals, local doctors, just like maybe our Medicare or, you know, our Medicaid, or just that kind of program where they got local help, where they don't have to go to a mile city, Fort Harrison, Salt Lake, or something like that. That's what I favor.
There's one point that I want to make clear. For all the favors of the citizens that are possible and I, you've got to do it through it. However, these people that have been personally disabled by enemy actions in this country should not be deprived of their compensation, even if they do get them, if possible.
I would agree. Thanks, Ed, for coming up. I appreciate that. I think your hair's getting thicker. I think your part's getting wider, but.
Me?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Senator. First, I want to compliment you on the initiative you've taken in regards to setting up an international national network of telecommunications. You sent me some information on that and I look through it and I hope you will continue to pursue it. It'll be good for Montana. Next isn't quite a compliment, I would say.
That's all right. You got to take the breaks with the back.
Right. The question is, I wonder why you and others who are, are very interested, as you ought to be, in, in saving money and cutting costs, are still support the subsidy on public lands for grazing, logging, and mining. We're not, not, in Montana, we are not all loggers or grazers.
Right. Let me, let me just comment on that. I would, I would tell you why the argument on, on, let's take grazing first. Number one, what was proposed, we're trying to fix a problem, like trying to fix a wristwatch with a, with a, with a hammer, okay? They come at it with, with just a complete thing that was, that was completely unacceptable and were not ready to come, okay? So you have to stand up and fight the whole thing. There are grazers and I think there are people in Montana that would accept a small bump in grazing fees. In fact, in fact, I would say that they will probably come forward in this, right before after we get back from this break, with a formula that would call for a small bump in grazing fees, okay? And I think it will, I, I think probably that will happen. Now, in mining, mining is the only, the National Mining Act is the only law that we have left. It's a land tenure act. And, and when you start talking about royalties, you're talking about something that, that would, under royalties would, especially in hard rock mining, would probably destroy the mining industry. Now, and, and the industry has come forward and they said, "Okay, we probably will," and I think the administration, I think the Secretary of Interior is ready to look at now, situation, says, "Okay, royalties pay on net rather than a straight twelve percent," okay, as called it. So we will see how that, there's, there's nobody, there's none of us that will not probably accept some fee. But there's also, if you turn around this way, I can remember when there was thirty people who managed all the BLM in the state of Montana. Now there's over, what, five hundred BLM employees? I don't know what they all do. And that, and that, and they say, "Well, they got to, they got to make a profit something." They should have made a profit. But, but they say, "Well, you know, you got to come up with all the money for all this." But I'm telling you, I, I don't know all these people that, that would be out there and they running each other with their own pictures. But I can remember when there's thirty people that managed all the BLM in the state of Montana and they did it very well. And in fact, that was a time when the Bureau of Land Management was in partnership with the Society of Range Management. And, and we improved, we improved rangeland like you can't believe. In fact, the rangeland today is, is, is just, has its shoulders above what it was years ago. And it's carrying capacity. And they're, we're working out, now we're working out situations where, in order to hang on to things, I think the agreement that was made over on the Fleece and at Walckirk, where you get two, three, or four agencies together and make an agreement with, with the, with the grazers, and, and to control that grazing and to rotate those pastures. Have you seen those, those, those areas and their management plans? It's remarkable, we're doing some remarkable things because we have cooler hands. And, and we're getting some things done. But, but I think there's some people that would, that would invite some increases. But you don't go at it, don't fix a wristwatch with a, with a sledgehammer. And so.
In that regard, sir, I'd like to, to mention documented case, documented cases I'm aware of, where grazers on public land, permittees, were charged the fee for public lands and then turned around and subleased that very same way illegally, incidentally, for several times what they were paying the US government. And yet the argument is continually made that those, those fees are, that they could not make it otherwise, yet those people who subleased were obviously going to be making it on much higher amounts.
Yeah, I, I would agree. And there was, there was not a lot of those, but there was some illegalities and so the enforcement, the rules are, are, now I kind of like the idea and I think it's going to carry over and I think Babbitt kind of likes the idea too, of, you know, you start out at a level and you give credits for the amount of work that the grazer does as far as the lands, you know, like water development and, and cleansing and this kind of stuff. So we're not, we're not geared, we're not written in stone, okay? But let's, but let's go at it like, what I'm afraid of, if you get those fees up to where there cannot be, where it becomes economically impossible to lease that grass, then the ranch loses its buy, its economic viability. We lose the ranch, then what happens on the private land that goes with that lease? That land is, sells out in thirty or forty acre ranchettes to some of our good folks from everywhere. And, and, and we lose our winter range for our wildlife because the majority of wildlife still winters on private land. And that takes away our winter habitat. And I would, you know, there's, that's a double betted act, if you know what I mean. It's a double betted act. And I thank you for those comments. Thank you very much. But I hope you understand what we're trying to do too. Yes, ma'am, how much? She's been standing there.
I had to catch my way out back. My name is Alice Campbell and I'm chairperson of the local Democratic Central Committee in Missoula County. I'm standing here.
Okay, my mother was a good one too. My mom was the chairman of the county. She has also served on the Senate, on the State Democratic Party in Missoula. She, she complained that I got too way, too far away at home. Eighty-three, wonderful lady.
Want to thank you for being here today, but one hour is such a short time. So many conversations have been very long and we aren't getting through what we want. We would like to request that you do, we would like to request that you back our President's plan for debt reduction and we need, our infrastructure is suffering, we need jobs, our human resources are suffering, and our, our health is suffering. And by the way, our platform covers the healthcare of the single payer system. We feel that the money's in the system and that we're, that we would go state by state and that would be the way. And it's being sold to the people that we can't afford it. We can't afford it because we're spending it. We're already spending that money. And we would take the insurance companies out of it and the people would have the say. And, and a healthcare is a person's right. Good healthcare is a person's right. And we have too many people that are not covered by health insurance because they cannot afford it and they do not get Medicaid. And I feel that.
Why?
Why?
Yeah, Medicaid.
Because their income is just, perhaps just above, it's really not a living income, but it's, the standards are too low. And, and that's the reason that they don't qualify for health. Good, many of us have families that have no healthcare. One of my sons and his wife and three children, they have no healthcare and they are not on public aid of any kind, but they still don't have any healthcare because they can't afford it. When they have to have healthcare that's nine hundred dollars deductible, then if that child has a chronic illness, that isn't taken care of because you have to wait till you've spent the nine, a hundred before you give. So we absolutely need that. But we need, we feel that the, that the President's plan for reducing the debt and revenue increases is the answer. And we feel that we would like to see the other party back that. And one other issue, and I'm just going to go into it real quickly, I also am a member of the Board of of the board of directors of Montana Coalition for Nursing Home Reform. And we have so many planned problems with that in that area. Our senior citizens are not getting decent care, they're not getting their declining years, they're not being treated with dignity. And the reason is that it's a big business and they're making money off of it and they don't hire adequate staff. And that is another reason that we're suffering from this. We have a problem with housing, we have a problem with housing, I serve and care housing for. The problems are horrid, they're just endless, but we must do something about it and we can't just filibuster to keep them from anything happening. We have to do something and we have to do it now, because the American people demand it. We no longer are going to wait while our Congress of the United States keeps not letting us have what we need. We have a right to decent care.
It'd be interesting, and if you could, one of these days, I'd be interested in your thoughts on nursing home care reform. I'm on the committee for agents. I'd certainly like to have your views on that. One day when you want to send me a letter on that, Alice, I'd take a look at it.
All right, thank you.
All this stuff, we'd be happy to, we'd be happy to consider. This is like I said, if, I'm with the president all the way on reducing the debt, but he does not. The facts and figures do not pair that up, and so that's what we are. And we will find a way to negotiate, compromise with that. And we will, hopefully, we'll be, to the federal level of America.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Yes, right here in the front row, yes.
My name is Don Dahmer and I guess I'd like, lady, I'd like to believe, I'd really like to believe that our president's gonna lower the national debt. And like you have made us aware, he is not. And I think anybody who earns an income of 10 or 20 or $30,000 and spends 15 or 25 or 35 after a number of years has to call it quits and has to run a surplus in their budget to reduce that accumulated debt. I guess the thing I don't see, you mentioned it with regard to BLM, it seems that the government feels that each year that goes on, that the previous year's size of government remains the same and we grow from there. And I don't know, but in business, if you're trying to get to a certain end of bottom line, a dollar in revenue does the same thing as a reduced dollar in expenses. And I'd sure like to see you pull off this balanced budget amendment and line item veto. Thank you for coming.
The president, I'll be right with you. The president, the president wants line item veto, by the way, and I think we should give him that. We will be very supportive of that. Although we've been defeated on one vote already this year on line item veto, balanced budget amendment, I think, is that a bad sign or a good sign? The lights go out. And we will continue to support those kind of responsibilities. I really believe the president thinks he's on the right track and we'll work with him everywhere we can work with. And you're right, it's getting darker. So, but those things, we will work those out and if they will let us. Because this whole debate has been a great philosophical debate, it really has. And I think the American people, I don't think you're fooled, the American people, the American people know exactly what's going on. I'll be right with you at the back, I'm gonna go to this lady that stood up right there.
Yes, Senator. I'm very concerned about how fruity we are right now. I think we're spending money we don't have. I don't see any, anything on the part of people back in Washington to reduce spending. And I think that if we don't start reducing spending, there is absolutely no way that we're gonna tax all of us. I mean, what are you gonna do when you take every penny that we got and tax, when there's no more? And I think until we get spending under control, I've got three little granddaughters, and I want to see them live in a country where they can achieve and accomplish things and they aren't saddled with $50,000 or $60,000 of debt the day they're born. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Lady in the back of the room, she got her hand up back there, and she had her hand up, it's almost falling off. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming, Senator, and I don't need the microphone, I'm a former teacher.
I'm not an auctioneer.
First of all, first things first, where, who will collect these from us? I don't see anyone...
Right back there she is. Yep, right back there. She's here, or you can drop them on the desk, up here with me.
I'll handle it.
Let me make some introductions, by the way, while the lady makes a good point, I'm, I fail to do that. Dwight McKay, who is our Director of Field Services and Chief of Staff of the State of Montana, is up here. Dwight, I served on board county committees together in Yellowstone County, so we've known each other. And Julie Altman, who is in the back of the room, who operates our office here in Missouri. They are your slaves and I am your slave, so thank you for noticing that.
I wanted to take care of that first and then I'd like to ask you, it was my turn out to be a rather embarrassing question. I received yesterday a letter from Senator Hatch because I had called his office and your office and Dole's office about not voting for Janet Reno. How are you, how do you feel about it now that you all voted for her unanimously and she conducted a Saturday night or Tuesday night or whatever night slaughter by firing all the attorney generals?
Well, it's not too embarrassing. I'll tell you, well, she went through voice vote, didn't she, I think? I think she did, I think she was, I took the same attitude with Mr. Clinton that I took with Mr. George, okay? The president is entitled to his cabinet, who he feels comfortable with. I think the president sort of got his fingers burnt on Zoe Bear. And he did like that very much. But I think I am more scrutinizing of the people that are in sub-cabinet positions, because those are the people that affect your life much more than a cabinet secretary. And the firing of all the county attorneys, I think everybody understands the system. I can remember when I was elected in 1988, when I named Doris Popper as, or my choice was Doris Popper as the United States Attorney for the State of Montana, my goodness sakes, the lives of folks around town just got all excited about that. Same was on my selection for United States Marshals. And some folks, and they turned out to be a wonderful United States Marshal, worked with law enforcement very well, and I think Doris Popper has been a marvelous. But the system is, when a new president goes in, that's kind of the way things are done, and Doris tendered her resignation long before Janet Reno called for her resignation, which I think was proper. The blatant firing, I think, sort of templatizes the mindset that is in Washington right now, and I don't exactly concur with that, okay? I think there's ways of doing things and ways of not doing things. I would like, maybe, I hate to use this expression, gentler, kinder way of doing things. You must remember, you must remember that that's the way the system works and I think everybody understands that. And, but I think Janet Reno, I, what little information I know or what little I know about her, I think the president is comfortable with her, I think the President of the United States is very important, I don't care what your political persuasion is, it's very important that they have people around them, that there is a comfort zone, you know, and I think that's only right. I really believe that.
Sir, I didn't finish. I didn't take as much time as the other people did, but I have one thing to say.
Okay.
I voted for you, sir, I plan to vote for you again. I also contributed to your campaign. What I would like to say to you, Feeney, end of my speech or whatever it is, is that I'd like to see all of you Republicans, not, double negative here, not go along to get along, stand up for yourself, gosh sakes.
Oh, yeah. We got in this, we got in this situation, what was it, Bob Dole called it, the name Pork Lock? Yeah, we got a whole list of it up here, if you'd like to know what's on the list. The young lady here with, no, the man with the tie, right, okay. He was, and then, and then you're next, okay?
Senator Burns, my name is Rich Beulah, and I don't really have to take our axe to ground here about anything, but in your, talking about reducing the deficit, I don't think there's any real mystery on how to do that. And that involves the cutting of particular programs. A few that come to my mind are those that I call the Texas Welfare Jobs Program, such as the Super Collider, the Space Shuttle Program, the Space Station Program, and Star Wars. And besides these particular programs, or including these particular programs, I'm just wondering what particular programs or specific programs you have in mind towards eliminating, to cut the deficit, and also what specific aims you're going to work for in addressing the healthcare issues, because if healthcare isn't addressed, then there isn't anything that's gonna work, because Medicare, Medicaid, and Social Security are just gonna go through the roof anyway. So I'd just like to hear what specific programs you have.
Let's talk about programs and, now, Star Wars is over, it's gone, it's in the past. That's done. The Space Station is still alive and, but it needs it, okay? I have to believe, I'm on the Committee of Science and Technology and also to NASA. What we're going to be doing with our space work is we're gonna be finding out, I hope, hopefully, some things about ourselves, okay? The Collider's in trouble, Collider's in trouble, but I don't know how much trouble. There, again, science and technology, it may be, it may be a part of the direction that the administration wants to go, if it is, I will have to take a look at that, because I voted against the Collider the last time. So I, okay, there. I told Phil, and by the way, I told the good Senator Dole, I guess it wasn't, I told Senator Benson, at the time, that I didn't see any Collider money coming to Montana, and he says, "My God, we gotta get some money to Montana so we can have our program, our program to survive." But he was a little late, now he's Secretary of Transit, but I don't know how that goes. You do not have to cut so many programs, and I would agree on national healthcare. Folks, let's talk about, a little bit about that, and I would, we welcome your mail on this, by the way. Until we address entitlements, entitlements, we cannot get this budget thing under control. Appropriations Committee only deals with about 35% of the money that is spent by the federal government. The rest of it is entitlements. There's nothing in the Constitution of the United States of America that entitles us to anything. Now, when you talk about healthcare and reforming healthcare, let me walk you through some things. There is three distinct elements in healthcare as far as the American people see it. They want it fast, they want it cheap, and they want it good. Would you agree with that?
Yep.
When you take two of those, you destroy the third, because you can only have two. If you want it good and fast, it's gonna be expensive. If you want it fast and cheap, it can't be good. And we are spoiled in this country. Basically, we're spoiled. If you want it good and cheap, it cannot be the best, or even access to get to it. Now, we've got, that's, now, when we start talking about things, those things we've gotta consider. Now, in the whole debate and the scenario, and we're confronted with this as policymakers, and everybody can make it up and make all kinds of great speeches on how we're going to provide healthcare for America, but then when you get down to bottom line, how do you pay for it? Now, you gotta consider, what do we do with better programs? How do we treat those? How, what do we do with a very important part of Montana's Indian Hill Service? How do we treat that? How do we treat workers' comp? How do we treat Medicaid? How do we treat Medicare? All of this is in the pot. How do we treat risk management? It is not a simple situation as some of us politicians would make it out to be. So it is, and it's gonna be very expensive, very expensive. So, now, we'll also tell you this, there are no, there is not consensus in the Republican Party, nor the Democratic Party, nor the White House of what this will look like. If there was a consensus, it would be on the table, and it is not. And so I would, as this debate goes on, it will be very, very difficult in making some of those decisions. And then some of us have not dealt with the terrible six-letter R-word, R-word, R-word. I'll get it for you a second. Auctioneers always have a problem like that. R-word, it's called rational. And we have to consider that. So it's, I wish you would just turn that over in your mind and take those into consideration as you would in your own mind try to put together some policy on how we deal with this very complex problem. But I think, and I'll take your, I'll see how you solve it in just a little bit, but I promised this young lady right here, and I thank you.
Yes, Senator. I would like you to correct me if I'm wrong about this, but I didn't hear any statement from you or your office regarding the Blue Mountain terrorism that happened two weeks ago, and I may be wrong, I may have missed in the papers or at the clinic during the protest, but I was wondering if you could address the bombing there and tell us a little bit about what you think about that.
The people that did it go to jail. It's the worst thing, that our country is not getting together like it is. It is not. That's against the law and they go to jail, period, okay? Because if we allow that to happen, then our society falls apart. Yes, sir. No, the guy in the red coat way back in the back that's got the red hair.
I wanted to call your attention to the fact that a common edible mushroom, Rhaphyronosis, has just recently been proved effective in combating HIV, and to underline this statement by the fact that many of our living forests now produce large numbers of edible and gourmet mushrooms, which could be, which could be further utilized. When you're, when you're supporting deficit logging, you're ignoring a very vital part of the economy, much the way that logging the rainforest destroys rubber tapping and Brazil nuts. There are a lot of alternative economies that are based on the living forest. $39 million worth of Matsutake mushrooms were exported from the state of Oregon to Japan last year, and this is a pretty significant alternative when you're looking at a lot of people being hurt by the logging industry. Those forests are not any good once they're cut down, but as long as they're alive, you can have alternative sources of income, such as mushroom harvesting.
Senator Burns, I think... Conrad will do.
In spite of the cities and counties' best efforts, we have some log jams over the rivers. the rivers. And I know that there was some talk in this morning's paper about the McClay Bridge, but I'd also like to bring your attention that the Clark Fort, or rather, the Hidden Street Bridge and the Orange Street and Russell Street are still two-lane bridges. And, uh, I realize there's a lot of things that can be done to alleviate congestion, and one, of course, is more bicycle, and other viable means of, uh, moving ourselves. But, you know, a lot of money, millions of dollars, has been invested on the part of city, county, and state, and collective highway arrangements in the last five years to widen roads and improve roads. Uh, I'm thinking of Orange Street, quite recently Russell Street, these are just coming. But, uh, these four-lane roads now increasingly are bottlenecked across the river now at three bridges. So if you would do what you can on a federal level to get some money for, uh, this type of infrastructure, and as Missoula's being discovered, they're noticing that, uh, there's more people on the roads, more cars, and, um, so whatever you can do there. On a national note, on a debt reduction note, I would just like to ask that as your guide and as your rule of thumb, that, um, you can do what you can to, uh, minimize, uh, government, uh, investment, you might say. I guess my point is this, that tax dollars, and I think economists will agree on this, tax dollars that go into Washington never bring the kind of reinvestment that I think the private sector can, can produce. And so whatever you can to, uh, promote private sector investment and not, and minimize federal investment. Because I don't think it works, trillions of dollars have been invested since the Great Society in the sixties, and all I know is that you need to create it. And I don't think the problem is in itself.
Thank you. You're exactly right. Uh, but you're exactly right. Nobody produces jobs like private sector. Permanent jobs, it could really help people out. And, and let's face it, you know what? I hate to admit this, but the government has been, but small business and entrepreneurship has almost been an adversary relationship. And, uh, and it should not, it should not be. And, and I'm sorry to hear about this. I want to take a couple more. I gotta make, uh, and I've, I've got, no, I've got one right down here, this man right at this, yes, sir.
Conrad, first thing I'd like to compliment on coming, but, uh, I hope you never learned how to be a senator, a Washington senator.
We walk around confused, and I'll tell you why, it's because we do business on a river that runs both ways in the same down.
Well, if you'll continue to be a Montana senator and help us to, uh, help solve the problems in Washington, both Republican and Democrat, I think it's politics is the problem, not, yeah. Just don't ever learn how to be a senator.
Yeah, well, I thank, I thank you for that. Did I get this old Brooklyn Dodger fan here? Yes, sir.
Conrad, David Lobbery here in Missoula. The deficit is the number one problem we've got. We've got to do something about the national debt. We are borrowing and siphoning off any flexibility we may have in our economy, any flexibility we have in government. We're not going to be able to deal with jobs, we're not going to be able to deal with, with the met, the health problems, we're not going to deal with anything as long as we've got this huge deficit. We're borrowing, uh, one-third to half of our, our total budget every year in, in, in government bonds and everything. Uh, it seems to me that, uh, when I was in college, they said that two-thirds of the cost of operating a business was employees. We've got almost four million government employees.
You have more people working for the government than you've got manufacturing jobs.
We have some, can't there's something, I mean, can't you people in Congress get together and go through and eliminate all these surplus needless government bureaucracy and victories? All I hear on the news, we gotta pick veterans benefits, we gotta cut this, we gotta cut entitlements. Not one word is said about we're cutting the government payroll.
That's right. Well, I, I would, I'll tell you what we did. Remember when the Jackson de Bock thing broke out over in Washington, are you? Everybody says we gotta hire some more meat inspectors. I said, I'll hire four hundred more meat inspectors if we can fire twelve hundred economists we got in Washington DC. Here's the way, now, every bureaucracy, every bureaucracy, folks, comes to Washington to lobby and they bring a constituency with them. It makes them awfully important. And so some folks listen now, I, I would agree with you. We don't do a very good job in, in managing our bureaucracy. Uh, and, and I'm having some real problems with that, but, but it's, uh, it's tough to do. I wish you'd go to West Virginia and run for the senate. Thanks, Washington, please. Thanks for giving me your big hour and a half out of a morning. I appreciate that very much. And anytime you're in Washington DC, drop by.
This coverage of Senator Conrad Burns's town meeting was provided by TCI Cablevision of Montana Incorporated as a public service to the Missoula community.